Next item is public comment. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and then are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here tonight for public comment? Seeing that there are none, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, we will consider the approval of City Commission minutes from June 7th, 2021, approval of appropriation ordinance number 06-21 in the amount of $1,349,221.54, the approval of a change order with APAC Kansas Inc. in the amount of $58,620 for the addition of the Sunset Cemetery to the 2021 Melon Overlay Program, approval of a cereal mart beverage license for McDonald Stadium on behalf of the City of El Dorado, and authorization for the City Manager to request American Rescue Plan funds from the U.S. Treasury Department on behalf of the City of El Dorado and execute all necessary documents related thereto. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I know that consent agendas presented via proof.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We don't have anything in old business. We do have a discussion item after our new business, and I'd ask consent from the Commission to move that discussion item ahead of new business so that we can have that discussion since we have some people here that want to hear that discussion. Do you guys have any concerns about that?
No, go ahead.
So we'll move the consent or the discussion item of Evergy Downtown Proposal up to the next item on the agenda, and I'll let David take it from there.
So at the prior meeting, we had briefly discussed the Evergy's proposal to downtown undergrad utilities, and the Commission's direction at that point in time was to meet with the utilities and figure out if they all intended to participate or not, and what the status of that would look like. So Scott and I met with Evergy, Cox Communications, and AT&amp;T on Friday last week, and I can report to you that obviously Evergy is willing and interested to participate at a cost to the city of $340,000. Cox Communication will also participate, the cost of $40,000 to the city, and AT&amp;T will participate, and basically their deal is that they will utilize conduit that will be used by one of the other two utilities, and their cost will be, there won't be any cost to the city. So the all-in cost for the city, at least in terms of dollars flowing out, would be Evergy's project is approximately $500,000. But then that also includes a value of $200,000 for in-kind contributions by the city, which would be in the form of running the conduit, pulling the conduit, repairing any concrete work that needs to be done, and any other supplemental work or support work that need to be done in preparation of the project, and then during the project, and then after the project, so like cleanup and different things like that. We would not be making the electrical connections, obviously that would be done by a contractor or a licensed electrician, but we would be doing all of the work related to running the conduits. And then Evergy would run their power lines through there, connect it, and then charge it back up on that end. Cox Communication and AT&amp;T would share conduits. However that works out, I don't know fully yet, but they would share conduits into a trench space so that they would, we would have a whole bunch of different boards to deal with and manage. And so by doing that, it's also cheaper as well because they don't have to have multiple boards completed. Let's see, I think, so there are some costs that we do not know of at this point in time, and that's just some of the city's expenses. So depending on where the transformers and other equipment are going to be located, we may have to move the trash trials and just relocate some different things, so we don't have those costs or not included in the $380,000, so that would have to be added in addition to that. And then perhaps the biggest thing is going to be scheduling. Evergy would like to get the project started on their end in February of next year. So that means that all of the work would have, the preparatory work would have to be done in advance of that. In fact, if the City Commission authorizes the project tonight or at some point in the future, we begin contact with Evergy and actually all of the utilities, and begin doing a survey to really determine what's where and how deep it is, and really develop plans for the project so that we can try to minimize damaging anything that's under the, under the surface of the ground. So we do know that there is some sanitary sewer lines, but those are pretty deep. There is some natural gas, depending on where that's located, we would want to map that out, get a pretty good tap on where that would be so we can avoid that at pretty much at all costs. Big challenge is going to be the small alley on the south side of the project and dealing with that situation because you can't get certain vehicles and equipment back there, so that'll be a little bit difficult. But I think it's something that the folks at the table, we could, we could work around and deal with. So that's pretty much it at this point in time. That was the discussion that we talked about on Friday. Again, all of the utility companies are willing to participate, so in the event that the project moves forward, there will be one utility hanging out on the pole, and then everybody else is underground, everyone will go underground at that point in time. So I'm taking questions.
Is this going to be trenching, or is it going to be boring?
It'll be boring, and I apologize I use the words "s" and honestly, they're not. So the plan is to bore the bore, and then we will pull the conduit through, and then the lines will be pulled through there.
How do they plan to handle the gas pockets that run into the city?
I have no idea. This is way outside of my realm of expertise, and I can just tell you this is how it's laid out. And then the other thing I can say is that there will probably be additional coordination that will have to happen. The three utilities, the four utilities, if you can include the city, have only met once together, so there will be numerous meetings that we will have to all get together and actually make a plan if we're able to actually rule out. So those questions will be answered then.
So 380?
380, yes.
Plus the in-kind work?
Plus the in-kind work.
Plus the in-kind work.
That's correct. So in essence, the in-kind work, the city won't be actually paying for that work unless, of course, we decide to contract it out. The idea is that if we do it in-house, then we don't have to pay for that amount, and then Evergy reduces their amount by that.
So potentially less the in-kind work. So potentially cash out is 180?
Right.
I think, is that what your question was? So 380, $200,000 worth of in-kind work. Comes down to in-kind work.
Yeah. So in essence, the city's total out-of-pocket is $180,000.
Cat, like hard cash out of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Evergy's going to let us make payments on this, not all at one time?
They said they'd be willing to talk about that after, I mean, later on, work out the details, and I don't know if it's, so I don't know if it's a three-year or a four-year payout, I don't know if they charge interest or something like that, we didn't work that out at the meeting, they just said, yeah, we'd probably open to do something like that. But if it gets down to 180, I mean, true matters, we'd probably just pay for it and go, that's a desire of the Commission. We have sufficient cash reserves to do that.
Other question. Kendra, did Kendra want, I mean, she, we got all awful lot of work to get her here. Kendra? Kendra, do you have some input?
I'm here. Yeah.
Do you have some input, Kendra, or questions? Guess not.
Kendra?
Oh, she's, I am talking.
Okay, you were muted.
You are muted, and then we still didn't hear you, so try to get, don't mute yourself. You're muted again, Kendra.
Hey.
Okay, don't mute yourself. You did it.
Sit on your hands.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm for the proposal. I appreciate the fact that Evergy has agreed to the city being able to do in-kind work to cut down the cost on our part. I think in the, in the email David sent, they were even willing for it to be spread out over a couple of, three years or so, and not all at once. I do know that when John Banks and Wade redid their two buildings, Evergy gave them no choice but to go underground. I know John and Wade both went heads-to-head with Evergy, and it's like, no, what you've got is so outdated, we're not going to do that. And so both, those buildings went underground because of Evergy, and it's, it just makes sense that we have an opportunity now to do it, and that opportunity probably will not come again for a long time, so I'm all in favor of the project.
To clarify, we're talking, we're not talking apples and apples here with Mr. Banks and Wade's building. Their, their secondary service was underground, but the primary feeding it is overhead on theirs, because it's fed from, from the alley. So, you know, service entrance is different than primary, but anyway, I've got some questions to ask.
Dive in.
This in-kind work, do we have the necessary equipment to do that? I mean, some of this boring is pretty specialized. There's companies that that's all they do, and not taking away anything from, from Public Works, I'm sure, you know, or I assume the utility department is who has the boring machine, but we're talking three- or four-inch conduits to pull, because this is all three-phase primary if I, if I'm right back there. So the last I knew, each one of those conductors had to have its own piece of CID, so I don't know if that's still true, back when I did it, it was, but. So number one, do we have the equipment and the manpower to do this? It's going to take our people off task, and I don't like it when, when we talk about in-kind. Was that, did I use that the right word?
Yes.
We act like that's free.
Oh, no.
And, and it's not free.
Right.
I mean, we're taking our, our employees away from doing other things, so. And then my other question is, or, I mean, I don't know if we, if we do, if we've got the proper piece of equipment to do this, because if we've got to go rent one or hire somebody to come in and do this boring, that gets real expensive real fast. And once we start, we can't, oh, well, we gotta stop, we can't do this. So then my other question is, who benefits from this?
Well, to get to your first question, we do have the boring machine. I can't speak to whether it's the appropriate size or not, because that's outside of my realm of expertise. At staff last week, Jason Paddy, the utilities director, had indicated that they'd be willing to do the boring, but I don't know as though they knew. I mean, we don't know the specification yet in terms of what the, what the pipe needs to be, what size, whether our piece of equipment can do that or not. Again, so that's some coordination that would need to occur between us and all of the utilities from that side, because, you know, we don't know, I, I think the communications utilities, they can put their infrastructure in the same conduit, I mean, fiber can go in the same one, and then you've got your electrical. So, but I do know that there's, the communications conduit has to be so many feet away from the electrical conduit, the number that was mentioned at the meeting was like four feet or something like that. So there are some things like that. So I couldn't tell you, there, there are some reservations on staff's part, to be frank, because they've never done a project quite this extensive in such a small space, knowing that there are other utilities down there that they have to work around. So that is somewhat concerning. And to your point, there are, oftentimes when they say it's to bore something like this, we would contract that out, we use no- no- a lot, because we just don't have the expertise to do it. With that said, understanding the scope of the project, they're willing to do what they need to do to make it work, and so that's one of the reasons why the engineering department would be doing quite extensive survey to determine, you know, where the natural gas lines were, the electric, where all these things were, so that when they work, to work around them, we have the best game plan that we have going into it. But as with anything that you do underground, you're going to run into something that's unforeseen and unexpected. Your second question in the first set was?
Capacity time.
Oh, capacity time. So to your point about that, I mean, it will take us off of our normal working tasks that we usually do, but with that said, any, anything that the City Commission kind of defines as a project becomes a task that we now have to accomplish. So while it does take us off of our primary or core functions, I mean, we do that frequently, so it's not something that we're not unfamiliar with. The type, the scheduling, however, does raise some concerns. Evergy has a desire to get in there and start their work in February, that's in the middle of winter, and it's difficult to pour concrete in winter without having underlying problems or other, other challenges you have to work around, I guess you might say. So Brett has, Brett has stated that in his opinion, it wouldn't be wise to do this at that point in time, simply because it can be difficult to do that. Obviously, we would try to do everything that we can ahead of that, but, you know, they're currently working on things now, and it's not like we can just, in some of these cases, it's ideal to be pouring asphalt and concrete and doing those things now as opposed to doing that point. So timing is obviously a concern, but again, something we can work around, I think. To your last question, who benefits from this project? I think there are. Go along, we lost, oops, check. So, I mean, obviously, the businesses that are going to directly receive the upgrade of electrical services directly benefit from the project. I suppose a case, an indirect case can be made that the folks that utilize those parking lots would also benefit indirectly, of course, but the primary benefit factor would be the businesses that would receive the upgrade of their electric infrastructure. It should be noted that the utilities, all mentioned, that they have no, no need to go underground. Cox Communications and AT&amp;T operate perfectly fine where they're at, and other than the city participating, and going underground, they have no need to do that. Evergy also stated that their desired plan is to upgrade the infrastructure. Whether or not they go underground or overhead is really a matter of city priority, because they do not have to go underground to operate their electric utility. So it's really, in terms of who it benefits, it does not benefit the three utilities that we, we would be going underground, to be sure, and it doesn't benefit the city in terms of our infrastructure, because it will just put more infrastructure into a smaller hole that we didn't then have to work around in the event that we have some kind of failure or something. So that's probably my rough assessment of that.
Has a creation of a benefit district been discussed at all?
We have not talked about a benefit district, no.
I mean, we do streets, we do sewers, we create benefit districts. That hasn't been discussed?
No, I mean, it was probably briefly mentioned on Wednesday, but it wasn't.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, it was.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah.
It was not, I mean, it wasn't fleshed out. I mean, it was just conversational.
Well, and again, I'm just thinking, so then what do we tell the next guy that comes in and says, I want underground electric too, and I don't want to pay for it?
Yeah, I mean, that was the, that was certainly the conversation from Wednesday night, you know, that we talked about a little bit. And from my perspective, it was, and make no mistake before I say this, that I fully understand the value of in-kind work. I mean, it's not free, it's, it's work. When, when this was initially presented to us, the, the interpretation of it at least was that, was that there would be a hard cash out piece on the front end of 380 plus, we didn't know where Cox would fall, you know, so we were assuming around $400,000. It made it, it certainly made it more difficult to figure out where we're going to come up with that kind of money, and we didn't know about payment plans and that, and those types of things. The conver, the conversations then later with David and staff and with, with the utilities and the conversation about really the hard-out cash piece was about 180, and then in-kind services, which have a value, but the hard-out cash piece was about 180 with the option of some payment plans and options. It became, at least for me, more palatable to be able to try and figure out how to make that type of project work, just like we would with, with other, other projects around town.
I got some questions about, if we participate in this, it will eliminate the telephone poles in the alleys?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And it will make it safer for ISI employees and 490 employees to walk out from the buildings and not, you'll be able to make that a one-way where the traffic doesn't go flying through there when they're trying to leave their businesses?
So we have not discussed any changes to traffic patterns or parking lots or anything related to this project. I suppose that conversation could happen after the project, but that, that subject hasn't actually occurred yet, so I couldn't give you.
Because the way those telephone poles are figured right now, it's kind of difficult for them.
Yeah, I mean, without the telephone poles, it, it kind of gives, it would potentially give us kind of a blank slate to be able to reconfigure that parking lot in aggressive aggressive.
Possibly, I guess it would depend on where the transformers are located and that sort of thing. So again, I'm not covering that affirmative statement, because as soon as I say that, there's going to be a transformer and, and, so I guess, we don't have a lot of details and plans in order to answer some of those questions, but once we have those, we'd be able to answer them.
And if we participate in it, will it eliminate the fire hazard caused by the electrical downtown, lay it on top of the buildings and?
Yeah, whether we participate or not, Evergy's willing to upgrade the electrical infrastructure. That's, so that's regardless of whether it goes underground or underground.
The way I understand it, the primary down there in the alleys is antiquated. It's, it's, I think it's 4,000-watt primary, which is old, and everything now is 7160 or 7200, so that's the reason they're wanting to do this, because it causes, it causes problems when their voltage is that low with, with the loads they have, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, that's all right.
But another thing, when, so they set these, they set these pad mounts, so then they, these buildings have overhead services to them, who pays for that?
The services to the building?
Service from the transformer to the building.
I think that's what our cost is. I think that, from the meeting last week, from what I, I took away from it, was is that they're upgrading, they're paying to upgrade the main lines, and we're paying for the services to that building.
Well, but we're, we're providing the, the boring and the conduit between the pad mounts, all the primary, and then after you hit the transformer, then you've got secondary that goes to the, to the building. And normally, the customer pays for that.
Right. So in this case, what's, what is happening is, all, okay, so any infrastructure that's directly associated with undergrounding would be attributed to the city. So the connection you're talking about is going to be paid by Evergy, because as part of their project to upgrade the infrastructure, that would have to be done anyway, so they're, they're including that in their costs. So our costs will include like the transformers, the pad mounts, the things that are necessary for the project to be undergrounded, anything that is not related to, directly related to the undergrounding.
But that is directly related to the.
But if they're, if they're above head, they have to go, they have to connect the building somehow, and so that's included in Evergy's portion of the project.
So Evergy's going to pay from the transformer to the meter can?
That's my understanding of this.
I've never heard of that. In residential areas where they have overhead pole line, if you want, you know, they will bring, they will bring a service drop to your house, and you put the mast up, and they'll bring it to your house, point of attachment, and attach it. If you want underground, you pay for the conduit all the way to the pole, and it's, I don't know, I haven't built an underground service for quite a while, but the last time I think I checked, it was six, 700 bucks for a single-phase residential.
Right.
This is.
Under concrete.
Three-phase, yeah.
Yeah, so we have the conduit, but we would be able to, we would be able to cable that connects it.
No, but, but you never do. I mean, they always provide that. When it, to the top of the meter can, that's theirs, from the bottom of the meter can, that's the customer's, but the customer has to provide the conduit and the excavation. I'm just trying to figure out who's going to pay for that.
So in this case, we would be paying for the excavation and the conduit, that's part of our in-kind. Or at least the boring, we'd be paying for the boring.
So I, I like the idea of trying to get, trying to get things underground downtown. My, I've, I've talked to a few business owners downtown that I know, and, you know, the, the direct comment was, that I got was, if someone's going to pay 80% of my, of to upgrade my service, I'm all for it, sign me up. But I'm also looking, I spent some time this weekend looking back at our past meetings, and we put in a high-volume water line to the tankyard, we made them pay for it. We, we redid the road at new, the new BG building, we redid all that, we made them pay for it. The two, and what Kendra said earlier, there was two buildings that had to pay to have their stuff put underground, because that's whatever you wanted. We didn't, we didn't pay for that. We don't, we don't pay, you know, we, we make, we pay a percentage of like streets and sewer projects because of, you know, our, our city policy. This is outside of city policy. I would like to see what a benefit district would look like. I would like to see what a quote would look like for a company to come in and do the in-kind work, because I, I mean, I, I would like to make, I would like to make sure that a $200,000 number is a good number, for one, because you could have somebody come in that wants, that, that does that stuff, and they look at February, and they look at all the other things, and they could say that it's a $400,000 project, not a $200,000 project. I feel like a majority of our questions have not been answered tonight. And again, what I'm, I guess one question I have, is this just that one block? This isn't the other side, this isn't on the, the east side of, of Main?
So it's the one and block on the east and west?
So it's both, it's both sides?
Both, there's only one block on both sides.
Okay, so it is both sides, so that's, I mean, I, we're all, we're talking about, we've, in my mind, I assume we've all been talking about just the, the west side, but this is the east side also. So what happens when El Dorado Family Dentistry wants their line underground? What happens when the VFW wants their line underground? That's, that, I guess that's where I'm going with this. When Evergy comes to us next year and says that that line there needs to be upgraded also, do you want to participate in that? I, I, I feel like our number is a little skewed, and I don't feel like it's a solid number yet. You don't have, you don't have much information on anything quite yet. I feel like it's being crammed down, crammed down our throats to expect to make a decision with not enough information.
It happened pretty quick.
Right.
It's happening.
Yeah, Evergy says they need to know as soon as possible because they need to start their.
It's from government, we work slow.
I, yeah, I get it.
We work slow. It'd take, I ask you to do something that takes three weeks to get the answer for it. So I mean, it's not like our nature, we're not dolphins, we're whales, so. I want to, I, I need, I need more information. I need to see what that, what a quote would, would look like for the in-kind work, because I, I already know Murphy's Law, we're saying that we're going to have time in February, and we're not going to have the. we're going to have time in February, and we're not going to have the people to do it, and we're going to have to hire it out.
Well, let's be clear-
It's not, it would be down this fall, this late summer.
Well, I'm just, all I'm saying is, is that at some point or another, I got a feeling that's going to come back at us. And back to Nick's point, I, when it comes to the pain, when it comes to the benefit district, I, I don't know, I don't know much that's going to look like. And once we have that number, we can, I, we've done this for other businesses, and we've charged them.
Can I jump in?
Sure. Go ahead, Kendra.
Is this something that we need to postpone? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I would like, I would like, I would like more information, Kendra, personally.
Is this some, is this something that we need to put off voting on until we can have a work session to discuss this with the questions that you put on the table and pick an afternoon or evening that Nick will be available to discuss it with us as he has a background in this sort of thing?
Well, I haven't built much poll on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's up to the will of the commission. So, you know, I, me personally, I, you know, we gave David some tasks, kind of at our last conversation, was to get back with EverG, talk about spreading the cost, ask and clarify the cost, to talk to Cox about whether or not they would participate. The tasks that we gave David last time, he has accomplished and answered for us. City staff who participated in the meeting with EverG and David in this last meeting seemed confident in their, at this point, in their ability to perform this self-assessed work. There were some concerns about the timeline. There's some concerns about potential weather, as there is with any project that we post forward. So from my perspective, those pieces of it have been, have been answered. The tasks that we gave David to move forward to kind of figure out for us. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, anything that happens here is certainly the will of the commission. So, you know, if there's, if there's a motion to move forward in a second, we will address that. If there's a motion to table it for further discussion, we'll, in a second, we'll address that. That's where we're at with this. So. I did, and I think some of you probably did, receive, I received phone calls from the other two property owners down there that have already paid for part of their underground area. And both of them were supportive of the city moving forward with this project.
What about the primary that goes down the alley, across Main Street, and then down, what do they call that, Sunshine Alley? What about that? They're going to bore Main Street?
Forgive me, what's Sunset or Sunshine Alley?
Between the old Graves Drugstore, well, that's before your time.
There's the alley that-
Where Wells Design was, that alley to, to the south of there.
That goes east-west.
That goes, there's, there's pole light running down that alley. What happens to that?
You mean, just to be clear, the alley by two is the small one?
Yes.
Correct. There's-
Yeah, so that's, that's the alley that actually gives everyone a little more burn than the other part of the project. Because you're dealing with approximately, I mean, I don't know why it is, let's say 10 foot just per se marketed, but you're dealing with a small, narrow space. There is a natural gas line that goes through there. Nobody knows exactly how much clearance you have. Is it up against the building on this side? Is it in the middle? Is it on that side? We don't know. So we're going to have to figure out where that goes. We're going to have to figure out all the services that come off of that. We're going to have to figure out. And that's, you also can't get a bucket truck down there very easily to, you know, so there's, there's some technical challenges that I don't have any answers to.
Is that going away?
Yeah, that's going away.
Yeah, that's kind of-
So we're going to bore Main Street?
I believe that would be true, yes.
Okay.
I mean, what we can do, and the parties stated that they would be willing to do this, is on the next work session, if needed, they can come and they can be available for questions as well. So I think that would be helpful as well, to have Cox, APT, and EverG there to kind of go through that. We can even have city staff there so you can ask them questions about equipment and things like that. If you feel that would be useful. I mean, the thing that I guess I would point out, my, the recommendation does say, provided the actual cost does not exceed $200,000, but it should be noted that once the project starts, all holds are off. So if the project exceeds that amount, the other three parties are going to come back to the table with cash in hand. They're going to say, well, that's the city's expense. So, I mean, we are, the $200,000 comes from the cities, the value that the three utilities are placing on our at-large contribution. But in the event that something happens with the natural gas line, or we do something, or something doesn't go as well as it should, and it always does in these kind of projects, then that amount will be higher than what's attributed here. Just, I mean, I guess the $200,000 is only our at-large or in-kind match. But any additional expenses will come out of state's pocket. Those unforeseen expenses. I think that part of the challenge with this, and part of the reason why I don't have good answers is that we're one of the engineers. But two, we haven't had the opportunity to really plan this project, right? EverG is like, we want to do this, we got to do this, we're going to do this. We would like to be done by, we'd like to start our work in February. That's, that's great. But to do a project of this nature requires coordination. You're dealing with four different utility companies, a narrow space to work in, private businesses. There's a lot of things that you have to tie together and make work right. And we haven't, we haven't had those conversations yet. So I think if we had those conversations, we could develop a plan, we would have those answers. But we won't have that for probably a couple of months. And so that's, that's going to be the challenge. Even if we wait until the 14th, which I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but you probably don't have all the answers at that meeting either. Because the plan won't be fully developed and put together at that point.
I mean, I think the challenge is that the way this has come to fruition and where we're at today certainly is outside the bounds of our normal capital improvement planning process. And that's something that from the beginning has, I think, given a lot of us heartburn, is that there's just this, this letter that, you know, was kind of presented to us and say, hey, we need, at the time, we thought $400,000. You know, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong here, David, but you know, you, you have met with, met with the, the parties, the utilities, with staff, which is what formed your recommendation in this, is those conversations and then those meetings. Is that accurate?
Right. Yeah, once the amount, it was understood the amount was going to come down because of an in-kind contribution. Obviously, it's more financially feasible from a city standpoint. But understanding that if, in fact, it's determined that the city can't do this because of technical, you know, quantity issues or whatever, then that number will be-
Sure. Sure.
Toss that number in, it would be down to three. But be that as it may.
Well, under staff recommendation, where it says the city manager recommends participating in the underground project, provided the city's actual project cost does not exceed $200,000. And if I heard you correctly, we have no way to guarantee that.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
No.
No. Do I have a motion to either move forward or to table this? Or drive on? I don't know if Kendra can hear us. I, I think it needs to, I think we need more information. I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable just going off of the in-kind, just number that people are tossing out. Because what I don't, well, the last thing that we, that we need to do is put ourselves in a situation come February, March, when it's at $200,000 and we're voting on a million dollar project. Because we hit a gas line, or we did, or something else needs to happen. I want to know, I want to know what the boring's going to cost if we, if we, because in February, and I'm, you know, this isn't a knock on Brad, but every time we talk to Brad in February, you know, his staff is completely swamped with snow removal and things like that. And they're, they're, they're going in shifts. And so even if it's leading up to that, that our department, those departments are slammed. So this in-kind thing, I don't care what any, I don't care how we define it. It is still a cost. And it's still $400,000 going to cost this city, plus, minus. It's not going to be, it's not going to, it's not going to be the $180,000. So it's still $200,000 of insurance, of equipment, of people's time, of planning. That number doesn't just go away. It still costs us, however we pay it. And again, what do we do when the 200 block comes to us and says that that is down, and they want to go underground? The 300 block, the 400 block, we going to pay for that? Are we going to continue to pay for these things? We own part of that. We own that parking lot. I do believe that we have a portion, and I'm, and I'm not saying that we don't. We are adjacent, just like with the street. You, this person might not pay for their street, they're paying for the next street over. And I'm fine with paying our portion, our fair share. But we have to, we're setting a precedence now of something that's going to come down the road. Because I guarantee you, next year, they're going to say it's 4,000 whatever, and not 7100. We want to do it again. I don't, I don't mind participating. I don't mind trying to upgrade our businesses in that area down there. But we can't, we're setting a precedence. I'll pay a portion, but I don't think we should pay for it all. Just like when we do redo streets. And I live on Central, and I, you know, my street gets done a couple of times, you know, in the last eight years that I've lived there, and I haven't paid for it. Main and Central, not a lot of times, that's all highway money, and that's tax money, and that's money that doesn't come, that doesn't come to me. But I mean, I, I'm assuming it's that way downtown, and we have major projects coming downtown with the sewer and the water lines. Because aren't we doing a big survey down there about what needs to be happening?
Main Street is leading up a master plan.
Yeah, there's, there's a thing, there's something happening for that. So this needs to, this needs to slow down a little bit, and we need to get more information before we commit, we write a blank check. So I'm foretabling it until we get more information. Do we have any motions to either-
I knew that we table it until further notice to get more information.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion?
What's Kendra saying down there or anything?
Is she there?
Kendra's still on. Kendra, can you hear us?
She is in a different time zone.
Well, I don't want this to go away because it's something we need to address.
Is Kendra on at all?
She doesn't, she's on there.
She's not.
Kendra, you want to hear us?
Is she talking? Is she muted?
She's unmuted. Kendra?
Okay, so any further discussion on the motion in a second?
Yes, I can hear you.
So did you hear the motion, Kendra?
You made a motion to table until another time, right?
Yes. Yes, that's what the motion in a second is.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or discussion about that motion?
Okay.
No, she doesn't. Okay.
As long as we continue to discuss the issue, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Greg, do you have anything else?
No.
Nick?
No.
Matt?
I do not.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, just before we move on, a point of clarification. Do you want me to put together some information for benefit district scenario, or not, or?
We don't know what the number is yet.
No, but we can-
You can plug some numbers in.
Put together some scenarios for you to think about. I just want to make sure that that's something, I don't want to not do that and then-
Don't worry.
You know, we table it.
I would like to see it personally. And I would also like to see if we can't get a quote from a boring company to see how much that it would cost for them to come out in December and bore that.
I would think EverG has someone that they use.
Yeah, someone I trust. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a company that's-
They could probably, they could probably do it on square footage or length.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking a little bit more hardcore.
My guess is that EverG, whenever they put these numbers together, they put, took the square footage of what they're doing, and they said, this is what it would normally cost us to get this board. So that's probably where those numbers came from.
And they've done enough of it. I'd consider, I'd take that number.
I trust the numbers that they gave us, but. Set it up at the work session, David. Are we going to all be able to be at the work session? 14th, are you available, Nick?
What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
I can't do Wednesday.
Okay.
Can you find a day where all five of us can be together?
I can do any day but Wednesday.
Any day but Wednesday?
I'm fine whenever, just some evening, figure out between the five of us.
What do we do next Monday?
That's fine.
I'm fine. That's fine.
Well, the only hesitation I have is that if anyone gives us like four days to get the information, and if the issue is information, I don't have a meaning to pursue of the information. So Thursday?
Okay.
What can coordinate?
Figure it out for us, please. Okay. Moving on to new business. Agenda number 12, consideration of a lease agreement with the Pecos Baseball League concerning the use of McDonald's Stadium.
Following the announcement by the Broncos that they would not be having a season, the city has been contacted by a gentleman representing the Salina Stockade baseball, professional baseball team of Salina, inquiring as to whether the city would be interested in having the team play at McDonald's Stadium, McDonald's Stadium for their home game schedule, which they had organized such that that would take place at the end of the, at the end of the schedule. So we said, yeah, we'd be interested. Let's, let's talk. And so we eventually came to terms that are defined in the MOU presented here tonight. Basically, it will be a two-week quick season. They've already played the bulk of their games on the road. So they will come and use the stadium. And the way we've kind of, the way we're kind of treating this is a little experiment. So we will take care of field maintenance and everything. And then they will take care of gates. They will take care of concessions. We might, we're going to work with Tony and provide concessions. But we're going to do this kind of piecemeal, and I guess we're going to just tape it all together, put it together, and see if it works. Because they need to get the games in. They were very interested in McDonald's Stadium. They think it's a pretty good facility. It'll meet their needs for their home schedule. I think we're only talking like 13 to 14 games, so not very many games. Probably the only concession here, they, they were going to require a gate fee. And as part of that, the city threw in that if we pay the gate, or gave them the amount, basically let them use the stadium for free, they would allow people to enter the, enter the game for free. So that is, that's in there. I don't know if anyone has any other questions. They are possibly interested in seeing this as a test, and if it works out well, they may be interested in a more larger term relationship. But given the timeframe, they understand that that's, I mean, they're not comfortable doing it yet, and neither we. So it's kind of a speed dating, if you will. So we kind of get to know each other and kind of figure out how that, how it would work. And then the following year, if they do want to come back, and we welcome back, there may be some different change to terms and conditions of the MOU. But given the timeframe, this is where we're at. Any questions or thoughts?
I think it's going to be great to get some ball teams, some baseball back down there soon.
I'm glad to have baseball at the stadium.
You ready for a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I move to approve the lease agreement with the Pecos Ball Baseball League concerning the use of McDonald's Stadium.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'll get back to the top of this thing. Next item, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city clerk to provide a notice of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the Butler County, to the Butler County clerk.
So following the discussion on Wednesday, given that the new legislation requires us to provide that notice by July 12, in lieu of having a special meeting, we just decided, I decided to take the guidance unit commission and just wrap it up into a notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And then, very likely, the commission can go down from there, so if you guys decide not to do, we talked about it today, that's fine, we can go down and adjust that after, after the fact. But we do need to provide those to the county, so that they can begin their process for transparency as provided along. So what we are providing is about 2.096 mils, which will fund two additional full-time employees in Parks and Recreation Department. It will also allow the city to increase taxes based on the rising assessed valuations, and so that is a proxy, it's a little over $200,000 in new revenue that will be brought into the city. So with that, I would take any questions. In addition, the final thing on that is that we would set the public hearing for the revenue neutral rate in the proposed budget on August 23, 2021, at 6:30 right here at City Hall. So that's also included there. In the meantime, between now and then, we would further refine the budget, and then we'd also talk about the other non-male levy funds, such as the Enterprise Fund and the Pretty Viscous Funds. So, that's what we have.
Have a motion.
I move to set the public hearing for the revenue neutral rate and the proposed 2022 budget on August 23, 2021, at 6:30 PM at City Hall, and further authorize the city clerk to provide notice of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate by 2.096 mils to the Butler County clerk.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion? Did you have something, Matt?
No, I was going to try to make the motion, but-
No, 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 it's perfect, it's perfect time, it's discussion time, that's why we're supposed to have discussion here, so. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We did 14, which is EverG Downtown Proposal.
Land Bank.
Land Bank Consent Agenda. So this agenda item is-
Do we need to close the meeting?
Do we need to close?
No, so this is a new thing I was going to tell you all about. So one day, for whatever random reason, I was proposing the city with this agenda, and they have numerous committees, including, I think they have numerous committees, at any rate, what they do is, each of those standing committees is open when the meeting is open, and then when they get to that, they just take those actions. I ran this by Ashlyn, she thinks it's a, it's-
It's a perfectly-
So it's perfectly cool. So when you open this meeting, you also open it as the Board of Trustees, the Land Bank, and then you don't have to go through the rigmarole of opening and closing it.
Perfect. So Land Bank Consent Agenda is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Captain Edgar Dale, American Legion Post Number 81, in accepting as a donation to the Land Bank a warranty deed for real property as provided therein. Tell us a little bit about this, or is this just consent agenda?
I mean, I can discuss it, it's not-
This is just a consent?
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a consent agenda.
Yeah, so do I have a motion?
I moved to approve. They didn't provide a motion, but they just moved to approve the consent agenda.
I moved to approve the Land Bank Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Reports, Kendra? All right, how about you, Nick?
No, Library Board didn't, Matt.
Great.
I don't have anything.
Matt?
Had a great Fourth of July, saw a lot of the neighborhoods, on the fourth, were really doing what, celebrating. I love to see good block parties, and we had quite a few of those this last weekend. I don't think we burned, burned the town, there wasn't very many fires, as far as I, we didn't hear anything.
We had one house fire.
We had one?
Probably because somebody threw hot fireworks, shrouds into their trash can, which caught the house, or their, a building on fire.
A building, okay. I heard many, many, many compliments about the baseball game, fireworks, Americana, and that I did not hear really any negative about it at all, just in passing conversations. So kudos to staff for pulling that off. And then, yeah, it's all gone, I think.
I'm just going to echo that, it was a great weekend, Fourth of July, great opportunity to celebrate Independence Day, then we had a huge turnout at McDonald Stadium for the fireworks and those events. I think the events throughout the day, the Parks and Recreation Department city staff put on had great turnout as well, but the stadium was packed, and then as we were leaving the stadium, as we were driving out of there, it was just great to see, I mean, there were, there were cars and lawn chairs for blocks out, out into the city, just watching that, 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 that show. And it was a great fireworks show that the city contracted to have put on, it was a good ballgame, and I'm looking forward to more of those. And, yeah, so there was a house fire, and then there was almost a house fire in my neighborhood, my neighbors did the same thing, but we saw the trash can on fire and went and pulled it away from their houses, moved it down the street, and had a fire extinguisher, but, yeah, if you're using fireworks, don't, don't put the, don't put the used fireworks in your trash can until you're sure they're, they're dead, so. But it was a great weekend, I appreciate all the work the city staff did, and, and as much I appreciate all the families and citizens that came out, it was, it was just neat. I say this a lot, but it did my heart well to see everyone out and really enjoying, enjoying the community time and, and celebrating our independence. So thank you, staff, for the work that you've done there. City managers report.
So this week is the Holly Frontier Kids Fest week in celebration, it's kind of their part for the 150th celebration, so they have events taking place all week. I don't have all the specifics in front of me, but if you are interested, go to our basement page or the city's website for more information, all the events are free, and they've even underwritten some special prizes, depending on if you're one of the first ones to arrive or whatever, so a lot of great fun today, they did service work in some of our parks, so we appreciate that work. I think it's valuable to get kids out into our parks doing some, some work, because it helps them kind of buy in and take care of what we have, what we have there.
I just want to throw out, I got notice just a little bit ago that it's supposed to possibly rain tomorrow, and tomorrow's going to be a cool day, so we will postpone that to next week if it's raining, and we are unlikely to-
Okay. And then the other thing that I was told to, that I said I was going to mention tonight, is more of a discussion for you all, and that is City Hall. So a couple of our departments, for example, Public Works has shifted to a 4:10 schedule, they work four 10-hour days. It has been asked of me to ask about City Hall, and they asked me about City Hall, and I said, well, I have to take that to the commission because of the impact to the public, and so I wanted to bring that to you all for discussion. If you'd be interested in a 4:10 schedule for City Hall, so it will be closed presumably on Friday, but we would have coverage for 10-hour days the remainder, or maybe, yeah, I think that was kind of how we had slammed it off. So I can put together something convenient, and we can talk about it in more detail, but if it's a non-starter, I didn't want to do a bunch of work in-
So City Hall would be unavailable to the public on Friday?
Yeah, we could.
So if you called, not even, if you called City Hall, it's going to go to dispatch?
No, our new, sorry, I turned off my mic. Our new phone system allows for people to get to various other departments as needed by just selecting the correct number, and we've ensured that everyone has voicemail, like every, every time you press a number, you can get the voicemail if needed, and those show up on several people's computers, so we've done that, so we will likely stop utilizing the dispatch option, even if we don't switch fortunes, because people can leave messages as needed now.
Okay, I've never called before like 8 o'clock, because I always got dispatch.
Right.
So.
I, I think what I, my first reaction is, is that most people get paid on Fridays, and most people, you know, younger people need to be that last day to pay their water bill, you know what I'm saying? Like Friday, they get paid on Fridays, they get paid to pay their water bill, or whatnot. I just feel like maybe that might be cutting a complete day out, especially the end of the week, might not be the best choice. I'm not against it, but I think if you could rotate it where City Hall is still open, it's just people are working 4:10s, maybe some people have Monday off and some people have Friday off, but then City Hall's still open.
So we do still, we do have options, I mean, they can obviously leave their payment in the Dropbox, we also have online payment.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, if, 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 if we, if we're calling them, saying that we're, you know, we're turning your water off because you haven't paid for this month, you know, and then those people get paid on Friday at 3:00.
Our, the way we set up our turn offs, we don't do turn offs on Fridays ever, or Mondays, they would, and if we switched to this system, we would only do them on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so we always get a phone call the day before, or the day after, you know?
You saw that coming.
So I, I personally, like, I, I'm not opposed to the conversation at all, I mean, I, I get that, and I also understand the value of, of that 10-hour day and being able to really kind of get some things accomplished in those non-standard hours, especially having availability at City Hall for people after they get off work, and being able to come down and be able to interact and ask the questions if they need to as well. I'd be interested in getting some options from you and kind of seeing what you, what the schedule looks like. You know, I've been in businesses before that had this schedule Matt was talking about, that just kind of had some, some different shifts, but they were all 10-hour days, and so the, the business was still been Monday through Friday, but people worked their 10-hour days. So I'd be curious, I'd be interested in you bringing us some options as to what, what they look like.
The only thing I'm going to hear about is Trash Day. Is it going to move?
Trash Days wouldn't be affected.
It's just City Hall.
Yeah, the Public Works Department's already on 4:10s, with the exception of the Trash Department, they're still working five days a week.
They're doing their normal, yeah.
Unfortunately, there are just some departments that changing schedules to some-
Sure.
Police, Fire, Trash.
We can't put the police on 4:10s and give the rest, give them time off the rest of the week?
We could.
I don't know that I'd like the results of that. Yeah, if you could bring us some options, that'd be great.
Okay.
What else you got?
That's it.
And consider a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.